Eighteen on September seventeenth, two thousand and twelve at six thirty to Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Welcome. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please Kathleen.
Reed Anderson.
Here.
Davidson.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
McCambell.
Here.
First item on the agenda tonight is a presentation by the Burlington Steamboat Days. Mayor L.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been awhile. Yeah. No, I am here for the presentation and first of all, I'd like to introduce some folks that's with me here. First of all, Russ Brown, our President, current President, our President-elect, Mike Johnstone, and our VP of Administration, Sue Fries. And I don't know how I got this job to speak, but he said I talk a lot, so that's it, I guess. But I'm VP of Security and my duty tonight is to present this check to you folks. So with that, just a couple of comments. I wanted to be sure and thank the city right up front for all the past support that you've given us. And I think particularly the staff has been great. They've just become an invaluable asset to us down there. I realize we pay a little overtime for that, but they are very dedicated to our event and help us quite a lot. As you know, we've made a number of improvements over the years with these dollars that we're about to give you. In the past, we've been able to put a roof on the port. We've also built a stage a couple of times, made major improvements there. We've made some significant improvements to the infrastructure down there, mainly the electrical infrastructure, so the grounds can actually be used by other folks for a number of things. So rather than ramble on and on, I just want to present this check, Mayor, if I could, to you.
Absolutely.
How come Jim gets it?
Well, he's gonna pass it to Jim. Or Jim's gonna have his hand up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
You bet. You're welcome. Thank you again.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And we do appreciate it and it is a good partnership. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Many, many more years to come. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Item One Consent Agenda, having been discussed or considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. On the Consent Agenda this evening, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll, city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarette license, reports and bonds. There are four resolutions. One is approving nuisance abatements. Two, resolution approving final acceptance of release retention monies for 2012 Crystal Drive reconstruction project. Three, the resolution selecting a company to provide services for the downtown facade improvement project. And four, resolution approving fiscal year 2011-2012 street finance report, road use tax. We're setting the date of October fifteenth for three public hearings. First is a consideration of an amendment to the urban renewal plan for neighborhood development program, the urban renewal area. The second is a consideration of amendment for urban renewal plan for Flynn Hills urban renewal area. And third is a consideration of development agreement with Franz Hobart Management Services, including an annual appropriation of tax increment payments in amount not to exceed one million, two hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to have any of these items removed from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, council, do you have any that you'd like to have removed? I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve all listed under Item One Consent Agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathleen, please.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion is carried. We have two public hearings this evening. The first, this is the time set for a public hearing for consideration of the development agreement with Weingard Company, including annual tax appropriation, tax increment payments in amount not to exceed one million, three hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. And ask Mr. Frenel, if you could give us a little background on what we're doing here, if you would, please.
Actually, I forewarned Jason I'd do this. I'm gonna kinda turn it over to Jason.
Okay.
This goes back to, for presentation that was made to the council back in January. So if you wanted to sort of give some background on where this came from and where this fits into that whole process.
It has. We're digging into the archives. Good evening. Jason Hutchison with the Greater Burlington Partnership. And I hope you had an opportunity this weekend to read the business section of the Hawkeye, which talked about this very project and the renderings that go along with it. And just to refamiliarize you, with it, Weingard Company acquired Fairway Shopping Center, which really was in need of significant investment. It's at a highly trafficked intersection. And they put together a plan that rehabilitates that entire corner, preserves a lot of the retail development that was there, enhances it, and creates some jobs and significant investment. This company did not have to stay in Burlington for their expansion, but they chose to. And just to recap some of the numbers, about fifteen million in private capital investment. I think that's probably gonna end up being a low number, but that was the number that we used earlier this year. Adding about fifty-five thousand square feet to the former Montgomery Awards facility. And at least seventy-one jobs are what we're expecting from this. The company did utilize New Markets Tax Credits and they've also utilized the Targeted Jobs Program and the Enterprise Zone Program at the state level. And those agreements and contracts were finalized earlier this year. As an enterprise zone project, the company was eligible under state code to come before you and request a ten-year, one-hundred percent tax abatement for the new value that would be added, not the current value, but the new value that would be added to the property. The company did not choose that route. Instead, they came forward with a plan that would provide revenues to the city on day one and require no cash outlay, simply a rebate of the new property taxes that the company would pay. And you know that that's seventy-five percent for years, one through five, and fifty percent for years, six through ten. We, this was approved in concept earlier in the year. The legislature did amend some legislation with regards to tax increment financing this spring, and so there are a couple of additional steps that need to be go through, that need to happen. This is one of them. And we did insert a not-to-exceed clause on those rebates in case the valuation does come in higher than anticipated.
And there's potential for that to occur. There's potential for additional development to happen over the next few years at this site, which is, which would then have a full valuation being used to be captured in the TIF area. One of the things you mentioned, an additional step with the TIF, as you noticed at your seats, you had a different resolution and it had a couple, it had a section in there about, now I gotta find that section. It has a whereas, which in that resolution, well, actually both this, that resolution and the next one for the other one, one, two, three, the fourth resolution down is an, whereas an amendment to the URA, to the, to the urban renewal plan for the urban renewal area has been prepared in which the Greater Burlington Partnership projects, this is the wrong one, the Weingard Project is designated as a new urban renewal project and a public hearing will be held on that amendment on October fifteenth, two thousand and twelve. That's a step that we have not done, but we just set the hearing for the fifteenth on the Consent Agenda. We have to list these projects through, we have to go through a process of basically amending the TIF to include these projects, provide notification to parties that would be interested in that, namely the county, the school district, and make sure that all parties know about this process. It's an extra step that's been added to TIF this year and it's causing the resolution you have in here to, even though we're looking to approve this tonight after the public hearing, consider approving it, the effective date won't be until after you do the, approve a resolution after that hearing on October fifteenth. Cumbersome, but it's designed to try to make sure that we slow down the process and make sure all parties that are potentially impacted by this have a chance to be a part of the process. And I guess I'll turn it back over to you.
And, yeah, we absolutely, fully, fully support that.
Again, back to January, when you, when this first came up, the council approved the tax rebate in concept. You basically approved a motion that would, that you said that you would do this, but this is formalizing that process. You have to go through the formal hearing process before you can officially do that.
Any questions, council of Jason? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Any comments from the audience? Questions?
Tim Scott, twenty seventeen South Fifteenth Street. I tried reading the agenda this afternoon and didn't have a lot of time to spend on it. I'm confused. The rebates are, is up to one point three million dollars. Is that annually or is that?
No, total.
Total.
Total, over the years. And how, how many years does this go for or is it?
Ten.
Until it reaches the?
Ten.
One point three, ten years?
No, it's ten. And it's, that's a not to, the way that we're required to do this, it's, it's still what the original concept was, five years, seventy-five percent abate or rebate, and additional five years at fifty percent. If the assessed valuation comes in higher than what was anticipated, it's still capped at that one point three million dollars for how much gets rebated back over the ten-year period.
And in essence, if you get there in the first five years, then that's the end of it.
Sweet. That's a great deal. It's for everybody. I think, I hope you support it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none.
I'd like to make a motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close a public hearing. Kathleen.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Thank you.
We have a resolution approving development agreement with Weingard Company, authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, council? Thank you. Kathleen.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion is carried. Now, we have a second public hearing. This time is set for a hearing consideration of a development agreement with Greater Burlington Partnership, including annual appropriation tax increment payments in amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. Am I asking Jason again or, okay.
I'm gonna yield to Dennis.
Oh, it's Dennis's turn. All right.
You still work there, Dennis?
Actually, he's not really yielding. He assigned me to this and as you know, we're in a bit of a transition, so this is probably my last opportunity to be in front of the council in this role. And I guess I wanna say, before we get into the matter at hand, that it's been a real pleasure for me to serve in this capacity and work not only with this council and this mayor, but previous councils and mayors. And Jim and I were talking before the meeting, you know, it's a partnership and it works, it works really well when we work well together. So thank you for the pleasure of working with you and others. Tonight, we're talking about the, a project involving the Shell Building and requesting some support in that matter. I think there have been several discussions. There have been, there's been discussion on this at work session and Jim and Jason and I have talked about this for some time. The Shell Building was constructed in two thousand and four, so we have, Grow Greater Burlington has owned it for quite some time. You may remember, some of you, that we had a buyer a few years ago and due to no fault of their own, they had to walk away from the building after putting substantial investment into the building. And then we hit two thousand and eight, nine, and ten, and eleven, and, you know, the prospect level, although we've had people come and look at the building, we haven't had a lot of opportunities to sell it. So we do have an opportunity before us. We're asking for your support in that matter. Shell buildings are treated on the tax code when a development organization builds them, you don't pay taxes on them. So we're currently paying tax on that area on ag value and so we've been paying six hundred and sixty-two dollars a year on the land that that building sits on. In averaging our shell buildings together, it looks like that over a ten-year period that that building would generate about seven hundred and six thousand dollars in taxes, about six hundred and fifty thousand of that would, the new revenue would stay within the TIF district.
How much is that figure? I'm sorry.
It should generate on, again, looking at the previous building, should generate about seven hundred and six thousand dollars in additional taxes and six hundred and fifty thousand dollars based on those calculations would stay within the TIF district. So you're really comparing six hundred and sixty-two dollars a year to seven hundred and six thousand dollars a year and then six hundred and fifty thousand of that staying within the district. We're requesting that the council consider a TIF rebate of a maximum of five hundred thousand dollars over a ten-year period to assist us in putting, putting the deal together. I think the good, the good thing about this is that our interest in these resources is putting them back into the community. Most of the resources that come in through Flint Ridge Business Park go right back into the park and other development initiatives. The buyer is a local company that provides a variety of services to area manufacturing firms. And we, we want to note that if the evaluation on the building does not come out as projected, that we, the partnership is, will take the downside of that and so the maximum will be five hundred thousand. It could be less than. Questions from me?
I'm just curious, what, how much was that building built for when you built it?
We had cost in the building about a million and five, billion and five.
I kinda wondered that, yeah.
Questions?
Anything else?
Thank you, Dennis. Any comments or questions from the audience?
Martin McKee, eleven twenty-one South Twelfth Street. I have a few questions for him. Mr. Ankle? You said that the deal hadn't gone through yet?
I did not say that. The building has sold.
For what amount?
A million dollars.
Okay. So it already sold for a million dollars without us giving anything toward it? As I sent you a letter today and Ms. Anderson responded to me, that it had been only paid a low dollar amount because it's been owned by the Chamber. Who owns the Chamber, by the way? Is it a city function?
It's a organization of.
They have their, they're an independent, independent private organization.
Well, how do they not pay taxes on that? Because I went down to the county assessor and checked into some figures and based on what the Borgi Building, the Alpha Gamma Building, that should be, should be paying at least forty-four thousand dollars in taxes, but skews his numbers of seven hundred and six thousand dollars over a ten-year time period out.
But, but shell building, unoccupied shell buildings are considered differently than occupied.
So if, if it's only six hundred and sixty-nine, or, so what is the assessed value on it? If it's at only six hundred and sixty-nine dollars, the difference between the six hundred and sixty-nine dollars we're collecting as taxes now and what it should be, or what it's gonna be when the new owner and already has taken possession of the building, as of the one when I was down there, the twelfth. Whatever that new tax assessment is, you're saying that that's the increase in the taxes. Well, that isn't a true increase of taxes. The true increase would be what it should have been and what it's gonna be now, which greatly affects all the numbers you're using.
Except you can't look at it that way because there was no should have been and it didn't exist. There was nothing there.
It did exist. It's just that since it was a non-taxable entity.
Right. That's my point, is it?
Well, my point is, is that we missed out on forty-four thousand dollars worth of taxes every year while it sat there being owned by somebody else. If you're gonna make the difference, you should only, according to what I was told down at the assessor's office, if it sold for a million dollars, then it should be, I mean, when they reassess it, it's gonna be assessed like Alpha Gamma and those, which will be roughly a three million dollar, two to three million dollar price tag on it. And that's what the taxes are gonna be based. So if they's paid a million dollars for it, that must've been the going rate on it. So the difference between the two million and the one million should be what the difference on the taxes would be. The rest of it should come back to the city and not in rebate. Because we're doing away with, talking about doing away with firemen. We had a fire the other day. We had to call on the West Burlington Fire Department. You know, we have to quit giving away our money to have people come into town and do this. This is a local person. They said ten jobs. Nobody's made a comment about what rate of pay those jobs are gonna be. Nobody said what he's gonna be doing there. I have a pretty good idea what he's gonna be doing there and what the rate of pay is gonna be. And it's not a significant amount. So I think we shouldn't give him the five hundred thousand dollars. If they wanna sell it for a dollar, let them sell it, but that's their money and it shouldn't be coming out of our tax dollars.
Thank you, Mr. McKee. Appreciate your comments. Any other comments from?
Well, I would like to address the issue on how shell buildings or speculative buildings are dealt with for tax purposes. There is a specific provision of the code that says development organizations, when they build a speculative building, one of the advantages and one of the things to help encourage them to do so is that they do not pay taxes on the building during the time that it's for sale. That not paying taxes on the building has nothing to do with the Greater Burlington Partnership, or Greater Burlington as an entity being nonprofit or anything like that. In fact, we are a fairly significant taxpayer as an organization. We own property in River Park Place. We pay pretty healthy taxes there. We pay taxes on the land that we own in the business park, but it is a special provision of the code that says for speculative buildings, you're not, you can file and not be required to pay taxes during the period of time that the building's for sale.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Scott?
Tim Scott, twenty seventeen South Fifteenth. I gotta come up and ask questions 'cause I can't hear anything back there. I don't know if it's just I'm hard hearing or if this speaker system isn't working at all, but I'm having a difficult time. I can't hear anybody up here and I can barely hear most of you unless you're really leaning into the microphone, so just my perspective from back in the corner. My question about this project is, you're doing a development agreement with Grow Greater Burlington? Why not the owners, new owners of the building? I don't understand that. They're gonna be the taxpayers, aren't they?
That's, that's a good question. Yeah, that's what's the difference about this one than from the previous one. Yeah. Do you have a comment about that, Jim?
This is how it was presented. I suppose that they certainly could've made a sales arrangement that included some sort of provisions on that, but that just wasn't part of the process that was brought forward. This is a specific request from Grow Greater Burlington to try to make them whole on this whole project.
Yeah.
So the rebate's gonna go to Grow Greater Burlington instead of the, instead of the property owners? Seems a little convoluted to me.
It is something different. Yeah. I see your point.
I would think that if the developer were to come forward and ask for the same, same thing and then he'd be responsible for repaying Grow Greater Burlington, that would seem to make more sense. From a public standpoint, it seems that we're hiding behind some curtain somewhere and not being totally honest. And that concerns me as a citizen. I don't, I don't think there's any wrongdoing. I'm just saying it gives that valve, it gives that impression that there's, that there's something else going on. It's not, I don't think it's, when do we stop doing business directly, going through second party, third party, fourth party?
I totally understand what you're saying and I have, I had the same types of questions because it's something we've never done before, at least while I've, while I've been here. So. Jason, would I respond?
I mean, if, if I could just address that point, which I think is a very valid point. Typically, in a TIF arrangement like this, when we're talking about a reduction in price on property, what would be asked is a request before the city to bond, to incur debt based upon those future TIF revenues and to use those proceeds to discount the property. We're very aware of the fiscal situation with the city. And so our Board of Directors said, we are, we're willing to take an immediate reduction on price of the building and retrieve that cash over time rather than ask the city to incur debt. So it is, it's different than what we've done in, in the past. It's an attempt to make this as flexible for the city as possible. Certainly, our board would have preferred the, you know, the other.
It's flexible and it's low risk as far as the city's concerned.
This is kinda similar, as Jason mentions, about doing it this way as opposed to bonding money. We, as we worked with Franz Hobart on what their ask was gonna be for the city, one of the things we continually went through was the city doesn't have money to be able to go out and borrow. We don't have, we're not in a position to take the risk of what may or may not happen with property taxes over the next couple of legislative sessions, which may impact the ability to pay back if you do the upfront borrowing. We need to structure this in a way that keeps us from getting into that scenario. And that was a big piece of where they've brought this request in this format as opposed to the other, put the risk on themselves in regards to whether the taxes are changed through this next legislative session.
Well, and I have a comment too about the Chamber because I know a lot of people thought the city owned that building. The Chamber owns it and you asked Mr. McGee that, you know, who owns the Chamber? And the Chamber is a membership of a lot of business and corporations in the city of Burlington that want to see more business and more jobs. So I think it was a Chamber's decision, you know, maybe you don't know the whole history, to, to build that and to take the risk and pay for that. I think you raised money, didn't you? Or I don't know if you borrowed or raised money to build that building, but so they're trying to make themselves whole, but then they'll take that money then and then go on, you know, it'll go back into trying to find other ways to create jobs. I think that's the mission of the Chamber.
And in the meantime, the tax revenues from that building will continue to come in at a higher rate. Win-win.
I do wanna comment too that this type of approach isn't exactly unprecedented. I remember, it would've been at the end of two thousand and one, we had an opportunity to talk with multiple Italian companies and I had the good fortune to be able to make a trip to Italy and we sold Shell Building Number Three on, on that trip. But we sold it after a series of telephone calls back to the United States where I was talking with my then boss, Mike Brewer, and he was talking with the city manager. And we had the same issue about a gap between what we felt we could sell the building for and the city did help us with that gap at that point in time. So it is a different arrangement and, but I think it's, it's certainly very, very appropriate and we hope that the city will assist us in this regard.
Thanks. Mr. McKee, did you have another question or comment?
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead. Martin McKee, eleven twenty-one South Twelfth Street, Burlington Island. Do we not?
Do we not give money to the chamber through tax monies?
We are a member of the chamber. We have members...
Isn't there a... The economic development, isn't that what part they are?
They do, but we don't give them...
We get hotel motel tax. That's what he's...
For a convention.
We give tax dollars to them. So we do kind of owe them.
It's a separate arm, but, you know, they're all under the same...
We don't want to get too... We don't want... Our... We have a committee, an economic development committee within our... As a subcommittee of our city council? That's not the same as their economic development committee. So that's not what you mean, is it?
Well, where does the money go down to the hotel motel? Does it go to the economic development council or...
It goes to the chamber, which is separate from Grow Greater Burlington. Now, they are all part of a bigger overall umbrella organization, but it funds different purposes.
Well, I think downtown partners, in the paper it said is part of the...
The hotel motel tax goes to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is a...
Also does the economic development.
It's a separate arm from Grow Greater Burlington. And Dennis, you can correct me, or one of you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's funds separate... A separate part of what you... Your organizational structure is. That's on the nonprofit side. And Grow Greater Burlington would be on the profit side.
We don't have any profits.
Oh, so it stays nonprofit as well? It's still a separate arm.
Profits, but separated by function. The Chamber of Commerce is a membership organization. The city does belong to the chamber for an nominal amount of money. Grow Greater Burlington is the economic development arm of the organization, and that's really the arm that's here tonight requesting the support. The Convention Visitors Bureau is a subpart of the Chamber of Commerce, has its own budget, its own financials and so forth. That's where the hotel motel tax dollars go to support the marketing and efforts to bring visitors to our community. And then there's downtown partners, which again is a separate legal entity, all under the umbrella of the partnership.
But if they sell the building for a million dollars, then they have that million dollars to go reinvest in something else. We don't need to give them five hundred thousand dollars more to go invest in something else. They can wait to do it. Right now, the economic of this country is terrible anyway. We need that five hundred thousand dollars in our city coffers to pay for projects that we have, for firemen, for police, for the streets, not to go build another shell building at this time. I mean, they lost half a million dollars, we say, from what they built back then. This was brought up at a work session a week ago? Is that correct? It was not on the agenda at that meeting?
No, that was...
Oh, no, that was...
That was a meeting two weeks ago.
Yeah, that wouldn't have been...
It wasn't on the agenda at that point.
Right.
Oh, yeah. We don't talk about things that are not on the agenda.
It wasn't on the agenda... No, I'm talking about it was brought up when you had a work session and you were talking about Piper and Jeffries was here to discuss your things. And so out of that meeting is what came up, that they had sold the shell building and they were gonna be asking for all this stuff. And in the meantime, they sold the building, not waiting to find out what we were gonna do. And they hadn't sold it. So they took it on themselves to do it. If you're saying that if I build a house on a speculation basis and I want to sell it for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I can sit there and not pay the taxes on it while I'm trying to sell it because it's an economic development type thing? But yet, when I go to sell for a hundred thousand dollars, I can come back and say, "Hey, I need you guys to give in fifty thousand dollars." Are you gonna do that? Because that's what I hear is happening. If they wanted to sell it for a million dollars and take the loss on it, then that's their problem, not ours.
All right, thank you. Mr. Scott, did you have anything else? Got your questions answered. Is there anyone else from the audience wishing to comment? Seeing none.
I'd entertain a motion... Well, a motion to close.
All right. We have a motion to close the public hearing in a second. Kathleen?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Hey, we have a resolution approving development agreement with the Greater Burlington Partnership, authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement.
Any further questions or comments, council? I need a most... Or I need a second on that motion.
Second.
Okay, now, any questions or comments? Okay, Kathleen?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you for your comments, folks. Mr. Fleming?
We have a resolution approving purchase of a case, six twenty-one F loader for the Public Works Department, Street and Sewer Division.
I need a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Steve, would you like to tell us about this, please?
This is a budgeted piece of equipment on this year's equipment budget. We had planned for eighty-five thousand dollars. The low bid through the Minnesota DOT was at ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Because of this fourteen thousand five hundred dollar overrun in the planned budget, we are going to postpone a budgeted pickup truck for this year and try to reprogram that in future years. This loader is a more critical piece of equipment for operation. It works on construction projects, snow removal, flood and storm cleanup and other such important functions.
The pickup was on the... Was on the budget for this year?
Yep, three-quarter ton pickup was also on the budget, but we're better able to wait one year on that piece of equipment.
How much was that?
Budgeted at thirty thousand dollars.
Any other questions, council? Thank you, Steve. Any comments from the audience? Okay, council, you have any thoughts? You want to...
No, I think we discussed this at the work session, didn't we?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Okay. Kathleen?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Your honor, we have a resolution approving appointment of an acting fire chief.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Fournelle?
As was in a press release, we went through a process where our current fire chief is stepping down as of today to the role of deputy chief. And that puts us in a spot where in the interim... We'll go through a full hiring process for this position, but in the interim, we need to have an acting fire chief to be able to fill that role. Recommendation is to appoint Matt Trexel to fill that role. He has agreed to do that. We will, over the next few days, be getting together the hiring announcement and be getting that published out. One of the questions that's come up is, and it's not included in the resolution, has been what the pay would be. And I bet Matt would be kind of interested in knowing what that is, too. Matt, you currently earn sixty-three thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars, give or take. The minimum salary on the chief range is seventy-two thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars, and we'd be putting him at that. The way the non-union employee manual reads, when you're performing duties outside of your pay range, you can either get a bump of... I think it reads like five percent pay increase or to the minimum on the salary range for the position you're filling, whichever is lower. You have to raise it at least that. So that would put that at this range. And another question that's been brought up, and I just put it out there for your information in regards to Tom's pay as he transitions from the role of fire chief to deputy chief, it'll stay at the same amount. That came upon the recommendation as we've dealt with how we go through this process with a labor attorney. And we were just following basically advice from him as to how to deal with the situation.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments from the audience?
I don't know if I'm on RFP that you got in the workers' meeting, I don't know, but I'm very concerned about this. I'm Fred Starling, five seventeen South Seventh Street here in Burlington Island. And I'm concerned about the... I don't know, I heard something about what is taking place tonight, but as of, I guess, when I saw the paper Saturday, I just need clarity myself. And I think I'm coming to the right ones to get clarity because I don't quite understand the language. I don't quite understand concerning the salary. I don't quite understand all of the other details. To me, it seems as though whatever was done, I need to know about it more. That's all I'm saying. So maybe I'm in the wrong place. Maybe it should be done in the workers' meeting. If so, just let me know.
Well, I think that's a legitimate question.
And most of what was seen in the press release is about where we go with the amount of information that we can release. Again, a lot of what we're doing, the processes being done, is following the advice of a labor attorney and making sure that we deal with the situation in a way that keeps everybody in the best light and helps us all to move forward. A lot of the stuff that's in there, it's personnel issues, and we have to be confidential as we deal with those. So we do have to maintain some respect and care for our personnel. In regards to additional costs, with Chief Clements maintaining his salary as he goes down to the deputy chief position, with... In the interim, with Trexel moving up to fill that position, his pay moves up by a little over nine thousand annually. I don't know what the long-term person is who will be in the position. If it is Matt who were to be selected as a full-time chief on a permanent basis after we go through a full hiring process, his pay will be in that fire chief range, which is... Begins at that seventy-two seven eighty-five. It may end up being a little higher than that. But that's nine thousand dollars of additional cost. Someone would have to be moved up to the battalion chief role, and we'll see some additional salary costs as a result of that. And there'll be a couple of other position moves that would occur, captain level, that would involve a little bit of additional cost as well. But we're not looking to hire someone to fill the vacant position in that instance. If it is determined that it's Matt Trexel or someone else from internal who is hired, the increase in cost to the city under that scenario will be about, I would assume, in the twenty-five thousand dollar range, above where we are now. But again, we are following the advice from a labor attorney in how to deal with an issue.
May I ask, how did this all come about after twelve years? Somebody...
We are following the advice of a labor attorney. And in regards to the information that you saw released, that is what has been mutually agreed upon between an employee and the employer. And we can't... We're kind of limited in regards to dealing beyond that.
It started last year. According to the newspaper, it started last year. Nothing... Well, I'll let you explain it to me. I mean, according to last year, let's go back to last year. And I don't know who was sitting... Well, I don't think any of you was on the council, but anyway, let's just bring it... Let's just clear it up. You know, that's all I'm saying. I mean, I think we should know because of what was said in the paper. That's all I'm going on. That as the city manager, I don't know what you agreed on according to the paper. I don't know what the firemen agreed on, but I think it should be public information. City council, no one is saying anything. Someone here?
In regards...
But I mean, listen, can I ask you a question? What go on in the workers' meeting then? I mean, nobody seemed to know anything. I mean, I'm not trying to... I'm not trying to expose anything, but I just want to know. That's all I'm saying. Maybe it should be done in the workers' meeting. You said, "Go ahead." As a taxpayer.
The work sessions are televised now. We've been doing that for how long now?
Last month.
Okay, I thank for that, but I'm saying, was this brought up in the workers' meeting? Did you know anything about it? This gonna take place? Did any of you city council members know that this was gonna take place?
Not until recently, no.
I mean, you never discussed it in the work sessions.
I didn't.
I'm addressing it to all of you council.
This is a... The city manager is charged with responsibility of staff. It's his job to take care of staff. And our job is to oversee him and make sure that things are approved that he does.
I'm asking just one question. I said, "You didn't discuss this in your workers' meeting?"
No.
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 That's his job.
So he just can say... I don't quite understand. That's why I say I wish it was done in the work...
Well, that's the way the former government is. We hire a city manager to take care of the personnel issues in the city. And our responsibility is to oversee the city manager. We have no authority to go out and tell the police chief or anybody else what they can or can't do.
No, no, no. I've been saying that. I say, "In the meeting, did the city manager discuss that with you all?" That's all I'm asking. Was this discussed with you? That's all I'm not asking. Anything else is yes. You can tell me yes or no, sit down. That's all I'm asking.
Didn't discuss it with me?
We never discussed it at a meeting.
So the city manager discussed this with the fire chief, and that's it?
This has been discussed with, again, the fire chief. We went upon the advice of a labor attorney. Part of that process was also making sure that the council did individually know what was being contemplated.
But I'm asking you...
If you're asking... I just... I found out last week.
And that was discussed with you then, okay?
No, no.
So the city manager, when he made his decision with whoever, and if our chief were together, and you agreed on what they've agreed on, I mean, I don't know, things have changed now. I'm just asking a question. That's all. I'm not asking anything else.
Mr. Fournelle did say he had discussed it with us individually.
Pardon me, I didn't quite catch that. Excuse me?
We had, you know, had some... I don't know when you knew it or when I knew it, but he had individually discussed it with us. We never discussed it as a whole in a meeting.
Individually, who discussed it with you?
Jim. Discussed it with me and then...
No one seemed to know no answer when you was approached according to the newspaper. No one... You know, I'm a citizen. I'm a taxpayer just like you. I think he should... It just seemed to me it's too shady. That's all I'm saying. Let's just put it out on the table. That's all I'm saying.
I don't think any... Well, I think we're just following what the law is.
I think that what we're trying to do is be sensitive to personnel issue. And it gets complicated dealing with a topic that is dealing with the city, which is a public entity, and yet we still have personnel that we have to show respect and care for. We have some legal liability if we don't show some care and respect for people as well. So we have to be very careful about how we deal with topics. And as we've dealt with this topic, it's been one that dealing with the labor attorney and trying to make sure that we protect the best interest of the individual as well as the city as a whole, that we handle it in the best light possible.
But this didn't just happen overnight. It was twelve years and the qualifications. It seems as though the one underneath the chief had the more qualification at the time because I believe it was twelve years. How did he get appointed to be chief then? I mean, twelve years. That come through the city manager, and I never realized you weren't the city manager at the time, but I'm just saying.
And none of us were here.
Yeah.
Well, I mean... Reason I'm saying is, okay, on all of this salary, I mean, listen, things have changed. When I looked at the paper, according to the salaries, somehow the city didn't have the money, but now it seems as though we are, you know, we're getting the money to deal with prior of tonight. I don't know what all took place, but prior to tonight, when I heard the resign... The chief had resigned or something, whatever. You see what I'm saying? I'm just going on as of tonight before I got here.
Is that what this comes down to, the money? Is that what you're...
Well, it comes down, not only... It only comes down to the money. It comes down to the education. It comes down to actually why did this come up? It came up last year and nothing was done about it. Did the chief have an opportunity to say, "Well, I'll go to school and get my bachelor or whatever"? Or there was an agreement that we will let you go on until you get it? I'm bringing prior of tonight.
I understand what you're saying.
Prior to tonight. Prior to tonight, that's all I'm saying.
I just want to say this, though, in, in a regular job, whatever is worked out between the, the boss, the manager, and the person that, if they leave the job, if they quit, they get fired or whatever, that information can't be passed on, you could get sued, even if, from, which, I'm sure you probably wear this, but if you were to call somebody, pretty much all the information you could get is, they worked from this time to this time, and they made, I think they can tell how much money they made, that's about it. But I, I think the answers you probably want would be better served coming from, from-
What I'm saying is, what all of what I'm saying is, last year, you all knew that he needed this degree, and nothing was done as of last year.
You know, I agree with you, but that, that was a different city manager, and that was a different-
I understand that, I understand that, but when we present you with something, you tell us that we gotta do this, and we gotta do that, and various things, so to me, there is a big difference between one group and another group, that's what I'm saying.
I guess you lost me on that point.
Well, what I'm saying, when, when we presented you something down here, you told us the city was broke, but now we come up with a whole lot of something else, somehow the city is getting money, uh, uh, however to pay the two at, before I got here tonight, two was gonna be paid this big salary.
Well, that, that's an inaccurate number, you're going by there.
Oh, all right, well, well, but I'm, I'm gonna go back to where I was. Last year, nothing was done, the chief kept his position, and you know it, I knew it, I watched the newspaper, I mean, you know, I'm just saying, and nothing was done, and all of a sudden, here and now, the chief has been demoted, and now he's, you know, whatever, and there is, whatever has gone on, compromise of this and that, and he said, "Well, I can't say anything about it," you know.
That's the way it is, so, thank you.
Well, yeah, but I have one other question, one other thing, and when we presented you with a situation down here, you flatly, as a mayor, you flatly told us, "We need to look someplace else." You know, and I thought you were very rude when you did it, too.
Oh.
I didn't think, I'm, I'm straight for them.
I never intend to be rude about anything, sir.
Well, I'm saying, that's the way we felt about it.
Yeah, I'm sorry you felt that way, it wasn't intended that way.
Because it looked like one group can have advantage over another group.
Oh, let's don't go there, that's, that's not true.
But I'm just saying, that's, that's the way I felt about it. I mean, I'm straight up, I'm saying, it could have been done in the workers' meeting, but you told me to go here. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, thank you.
So we see a difference.
Thank you.
How's everybody doing?
Good.
Don't look at you like that.
I remember you.
Everybody just staring, yeah. Well, y'all don't know who I am, no way, do you?
Tell us again.
Becky Anderson don't know, Jim Davidson don't know, you don't know.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Oh, sure.
Oh, you do?
Guys got the rest of the fever, can't-
I think I'm ashamed, I'm not ashamed, you, I was up at the Revell Hill Spark, 302 South Garfield. I've been here since nineteen sixty-eight, Burlington, I got transferred here to IAAP. And I worked there for, oh, about four or five years, I went to case cooperation, stayed there for thirty years, worked in management. There is a difference between the private sector and the public sector. There's things you can do in the public section, I mean, the private sector you can't do in the public section. Why? Why is that? Simply because the public sector have you, we vote, we go and we vote you guys in, you know, and stuff, in the city council, things of that nature, to run our business and otherwise. We are the taxpayers, never forget that. Y'all smile. We are the taxpayers. When my tax dollars don't look like they doing what they should be doing, I'm going straight to him. He can't do nothing about it, then we're gonna look at, try to get some, the federal government in here, somebody to make you up my tax dollars, give my money back. That's the way I feel about it, it's just, that's serious. I understand what Pastor Stirling is saying, and that was, you wasn't the city manager, stuff like that, but the Hawkeye made it seem like everybody on the city council was running for cover when they asked the question. They couldn't get nobody, they couldn't even get the human resource department up there to say, "What the heck is going on?" One of these days, you're gonna have to come out under the cover. Why wait till one of these days? Somebody could end up down in Fort Madison. It's not impossible, we are a mayor, I'm a, and a lot of people. But we don't want to get into that, that shouldn't be what we're talking about. So what we should do, do everything under the light, walk in the light. Let the public see your character, that you really are working for them. The Commerce, Chamber of Commerce, I've been following this thing, and I've been, right, he was Scott, Scott, too, and when he was up here, and that is, the money that goes to Chamber of Commerce, we all know what the money, that's the Chamber of Commerce, that's the line for the city.
Mr. Sparks, we're on the, the fire chief discussion now. We're on the-
I know, that's what I'm getting at right now.
Yeah, stay on that, would you please?
Yeah, the fire chief, I'm starting to say, is, is something going on here that you guys just don't want to leak it to the newspaper, I don't understand that, and that's what got him upset.
What do, I mean, what do you think is going on? Because I'm not, I'm not hearing anything from anybody.
All right, well, you read the paper, you all read the papers, see what Hawkeye said, I know doggone well you didn't read.
I, I read the newspaper, that city council was silent.
It's just like everybody was running and hiding.
I was in my city, Mike, you know, with my daughter all day at diabetes appointment, so I wasn't silent, I was busy. Again, I don't know why, why anybody else could be answered, but I'm sure, with that being a touchy subject, a lot of people probably didn't want to, uh-
I guess I wanted to, probably, are you, are you guys really being fair with the chief? And I think that one time you mentioned that you, there's something going on, you mentioned something about, you know, in, in, in behalf of the chief, of the fire chief, that you supported, you supported it, and I think it was the city manager was Doug, Doug Martin, then, and that he went and mentioned something about, he said, "Well, he's gonna pursue his degree and get his degree and everything, everything gonna be all right." It looked like one of them did, one of them shoddy deals that went on, where I think even Doug made a, made a remark about, he was gonna pursue some part of the education for the job that he was in. It was basically in Burlington, it was a buddy-buddy system going on back in the day, and finally got caught up with, okay? I want to say this off before I take my seat, about the Chamber of Commerce. Forty-four years I've been here in Burlington, forty-four. All I say is General Electric, Champion, Case Cooperation, IAAP, top, four top major jobs in this town. Forty-four years, job creation. I heard it, I heard it three minutes ago, and that's what, what was going on, you know, and things of this nature, and that's what, what we got the Chamber of Commerce here, that he has, brings better jobs into the city of Burlington, where are they? It shouldn't take the city, the city, or the chamber, with the money that we put and give to them, forty-four years to produce jobs, better jobs in this city, there's something wrong with that issue. Now, that, when I put that with the fire chief, I think both of them are looking into. Why can't it take forty-four years to produce jobs that is equal almost to the salary or the job, you know, whatever it's paying, case, General Electric, IAAP, those are, those are the major, and General Electric, trying to get the hell out of here. They want out.
You're getting a little further away from the, the point of the fire chief now, sir.
But, but, but they're both together, they're both, they're both in city government, these are two things, and this, this guy right here, that you were talking a few minutes ago, that's connected with greater group, greater Burlington, grow, grow greater Burlington. When the heck are we gonna start growth? We've been waiting to grow for forty-four years. Good night.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience have comment?
Harlem Key, eleven twenty-one South Twelfth Street. When it comes to, you're saying you're gonna be trying to hire a new fire chief, and then you're gonna have to move everybody up, you just demoted the fire chief down to assistant chief, and you have his battalion chief jobs open, right? So now you just moved the fire chief into a non-existent job before, why don't you move some people backwards, and then you won't be increased, all you got is that nine thousand dollar expense, instead of moving everybody up, and then you got nine thousand here and nine thousand there, and you just keep dominoing it, then when you get your new fire chief, who are you gonna fire to make room for that new fire chief, if you don't hire this person as the new fire chief? You have the number of people in management already, actually, you have one extra right now, or you have the same number. So you're talking about a nine thousand dollar increase to bring his salary up to what it should be for the low level of the fire chief, but meanwhile, we're shy, three firemen, or two firemen, you want to get rid of three more, and we just passed one percent sales tax to pay for eight firemen. If we had not passed that, that would have meant that we would have lost a total of thirteen firemen?
Actually, that was police department.
Police department.
Local option sales taxes, the police department.
Anyway, we just had a fire, it was in the paper, Wes Burlington had to come into Burlington, and then, maybe you need, you guys need to give them a copy of my letter, I have one, I can give it, about what's Wes Burlington gonna do next time we call him.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience?
Hey, what else, kind of, one second, I wanna come to a question. I just wanna ask, because I've noticed down through the years, I think I've, I've said things and presented, and seemed as though I didn't get an answer, so I'm addressing this to the city council. Will we get this information when it's, will be released? I'm asking the city council, whatever information that I asked tonight could not be, will that become public information?
Beyond, when we're dealing with a personnel issue, beyond what has been agreed to for public release of information, we're not releasing anything beyond that. It, other, it's, it is a labor issue, we can't get into that.
Period. Okay, thank you. Another discussion? We have a motion a second before us approving the appointment of an acting fire chief. Comments, council?
I just have one comment. The only thing that I've been getting from, from people is the fact that he's stepping down and still keeping his same pay. That's, that was the only complaint that I was getting from, from my constituents, and I did want to bring that up, that they felt that, that he shouldn't be making the same amount of pay if he's, if he's stepping down to a different position, and I agree with that.
Anything else, council?
Well, I guess I would say, I, you know, I like to be open about things, but there, but we have rules that we have to follow, too, and, you know, this is a personnel issue, and so we're, we're held to follow those rules, and, so, we have to, I mean, I'm sorry. But on the other hand, we don't want to say things that would, you know, hurt someone or, or, or start anything gossipy, I mean, we, we just, that's just the way personnel issues are.
Anything, anything else, council?
Nope.
Kathleen?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Trexel is appointed as acting chief, and I believe Kathleen has a swearing-in ceremony to do.
Raise your hand if you'd be after me. I say your full name.
I'm Matthew A. Trexel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support-
That I will support.
-the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Iowa.
The Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Municipal Code of Burlington.
And the Municipal Code of Burlington.
Iowa.
Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially-
And I will faithfully and impartially-
-to the best of my ability-
To the best of my ability.
-discharge all the duties of-
Discharge all the duties of-
-Office of Acting Fire Chief.
The Office of Acting Fire Chief.
In and for the City of Burlington, Iowa.
In and for the City of Burlington, Iowa.
And now and hereafter.
And now and hereafter.
To fire my law.
To fire my law.
Matt, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you a lot for doing this.
Thank you for the opportunity, thank you for-
Wish you well, Matt, good to meet you.
All right, thank you. Now's the time set for comments from the audience. If you have comments about anything we've not previously discussed this evening, now's the time to do that.
Tim's got twenty seventeen South Fifteenth, I couldn't make a trip down here without talking about sidewalks. This is, this, this is a special one for me, Mayor and Council. Last time I was here, I was two people fewer in my family. Two of my kids have blessed me with two more grandchildren.
Well, congratulations.
And it's, it's one of the greatest feelings in the world, I now have five.
Wow, you gotta be old to have five grandchildren.
It's amazing, it's, it's really amazing.
It is.
Amen.
But my, my baby said to me, "Dad, so I sure wish the city would do something about the sidewalks," and she loves to walk, and, and her and her significant other and baby are walking a lot. They're teeny tiny little people, believe it or not, as big as I am, they're, they look like a couple of twelve-year-olds, and they're actually in their twenties and thirties, and, and then my teeny tiny five-pound, twelve-ounce baby granddaughter, and she says, "It's pretty rough on her when they're walking down the sidewalk," and, and she's bouncing all over the place, doesn't have enough weight to keep the thing down, so. I said, "I'd sure be happy to come down and mention to the council," and, and she knows better than to walk in the street, because I preach to her often, and I tell her, though, if she's gonna walk in the street, she has to walk on the left side of the street, not, not the left lane of the street, the left side of the street, as per code five twenty-one point six, I think that's what it is. Also, there's a new code, there's a new, new part of the code that was acted last year, HR six ninety-eight, I think it was, if you're gonna be in the street after dark, you have to have reflective clothing that can be seen from two hundred feet. Believe me when I go to work at, sometimes five thirty, six o'clock in the morning, Naria One has on reflective clothing. I think they should be stopped and reminded that they need to, to do that, not on the sidewalk, in the street. Now, it just slays me that I've got to wear my seatbelt, and if I don't, it's a clicker or ticket, and I don't care where in this country I go. I'm driving a six thousand pound vehicle, and I'm facing down three people in the street at somewhere in angular, walking towards me, three young people, a fourth in a stroller, walking towards me, and they don't give up an ounce of street space. Somewhere, somehow in this city, they believe that's okay. From angular street, between angular street and, I'm sorry, between, yeah, angular street and, and Pine Street.
Goes a little further than that.
Yeah, that's, I, I can't, I can't think what the next street is, but it's-
South Street.
No, Cleveland, not Cleveland, Grove, between angular and Grove. I'm headed northbound, they're headed southbound, three abreast. It does no good to call the police department because by the time they get there, they're gone. I mean, you know, three minutes is a long time. It's a short time for, for officers to respond. I, I think, I think you need to stop them every time you see it, and correct them, and tell them what the law is. That's my own personal feelings.
We'd be stopping a lot of people, though.
We're, we're still on sidewalks. I come here quarterly, and I have for the last five years, about the Mason Meadows development. Still, there's no sidewalks. I know you have an agreement, they have until the end of the construction season, which, quite frankly, I thought was ridiculous, that they had that long to do it when they've already had five years to complete it. We give away the farm this time, we give everyone a certificate of occupancy, we, we have nothing to fight with other than to say, by law, you have to build, you have to put the sidewalks in, and, and right now, it's, it's gonna fall upon the property owners and not the developer. The property owner's gonna have to go back and sue the developer because he didn't put the sidewalks in, and quite frankly, if he hasn't done it yet, I don't think he's going to, and he's gonna force a stand. And, and I'm embarrassed for the city, I'm embarrassed that we've got a brand-new school out there with no sidewalks, and part of those sidewalks could have been put in if we, as a city, had enforced our development agreement with that developer. It's not your fault, I'm not blaming anybody setting up here, I'm just saying, we can do something about it now. If we have to hire someone to go out and put in those, and then take the developer to court herself and leave those innocent citizens out of it, we should. We should get it done. We should get it done for the people that own the property, we should get it done for the people that walk that neighborhood and I see them every day. the people that walk that neighborhood, and I see 'em every day, walking through that neighborhood, getting exercise. I see it every day, I'm, I'm, I drive by there every day. But they can only go just so far. We, we allowed, we bent over backwards for that developer to create an enterprise zone so that they can get a rebate on sales tax, and they took three hundred thousand dollars to the bank, from sales tax alone. Look it up, it's there. Three hundred thousand dollars from sales tax alone. When you're the developer, and you're the builder, in an enterprise zone in Burlington, Iowa, you can file for a rebate for yours, for your sales tax. That's putting, taking three hundred thousand dollars out of his pocket, paying it up for it, putting it in his pocket. And that's pure profit, but we can't, we can't get him to fulfill his obligation, the developer to fulfill his obligation. I can tell you, when I was on city council, that very same developer come before council and demanded that we step up, demanded that we put lights up in, in a ballpark outside our city limits, because we were taking a ballpark property that was ours to begin with, and made demands, they demanded that the city do it. We've got that same right, we've got the same right to demand it, by God, I think we should. Anytime there's an opportunity, that we provide opportunities for developers in this community, and we bend over backwards as a city, and then the developer does nothing in return, or does nothing other than what's going to put dollars in his pocket, I think it's wrong. I'm all for private business and developers making money. I want them to make all the money they can make, but I also want them to fulfill their obligation.
Are you saying the sidewalk was part of the?
Pardon me?
Are you saying the sidewalk was part of the deal?
Yeah, sidewalk's part of the development. There's a development agreement, it's part of it. There's requirements within the city, within zone, zoning districts.
I'm saying the sidewalk that we don't have was, was part of that deal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, just go out and look, and just look along Mason Road, and then look along, I can't remember whether it's Cambridge or West Avenue, in front of the duplexes on the, on the west side.
Cambridge.
There's, there's supposed to be sidewalks there. And those sidewalks, some kids could be walking on to get a little closer to the school. What, I, I don't know what we're gonna do when, when the snow starts to fly, and we've got snow piled up six feet high on the, on the sides of that road, where those kids are gonna go? How are you gonna get to and from school? I think it's pretty short-sighted on the city's part and the school's part. They, they've got the local option sales tax, they've got the money to build that, and I'm so afraid that when next year rolls around, there's not gonna be any money left in those, in that federal fund to get sidewalks, and we're gonna have to scramble to build sidewalks, 'cause it's not right that we should force the middle school kids, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders into the streets to get to and from school, especially with all the development that's going on out there, especially with cornfields out there where you can't see around the corner, especially with the thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, especially with, with turning radiuses that are too small for buses and large vehicles, and, and especially with the seven thousand traffic count out there. We, we need to do something, we need to, I, I hope that, I hope that sidewalks are a big part of the comprehensive plan, and that, that, that they've looked at that real hard. Why we're on sidewalks, I, I give this council a little heat over a sidewalk of a private individual on Fifth Street, and one of my concerns was that there was, there was retaining all the blocks on the sidewalk. My middle daughter's confined to a wheelchair. She depends a lot on the sidewalks to get to and from, and when there's, when, when they're using a sidewalk for storage, it irritates me. It really does. Because I envision her trying to get down that sidewalk, and I know that she wouldn't be able to. She wouldn't be able to walk her dog next to her so that she could get down that sidewalk. And when, when I, I approached council, because when people approached me when I was on council, I contacted the department, they didn't know who to contact, they didn't know what to do, so, so they went to council. After I got chastised a little bit for not going to council, or not going to the department, so I went to the department. I had to go back twice, and I had to contact the development department, the development director three times before I got a straight answer. I was told that the individual that owned those blocks had until October 31st to move them, they've been moved, but hadn't till October 31st. And the, the rocks that are in the right-of-way piled, as long as they're not piled higher than two and a half feet, they can stay. And that was news to me, because I know that.
I know what you're talking about, too.
Dixon's, out on Mason Road, were told they couldn't put their boulders in the right-of-way. And I know another individual's told he had to move his when Dixon's complained that, if these other people were able to do it, why can't we? It, it, it's confusing, but it's, the sidewalk is the bigger issue, and that, and, and the people with handicaps can't pass, sidewalks are pretty narrow to begin with. And besides that, we're spending, we're spending thirty thousand dollars a year in, in changing our curb cuts, and putting in handicap accessible ramps and curbs, and making us appear to be a city that's interested in, in people with disabilities. And, I forgot my second topic. I get fired up sometimes. Thank, thank you, council, for, for listening to me, and, and I hope you can take care of those problems I addressed.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience?
Do you hear me all right? I can still hear you.
You need to stay in the front.
I am.
House Park, real to South Garfield. I was up in Aurora, Illinois, visiting over the weekend, I mean, I was up there all week. Me and my granddaughter, we're having a good time. I noticed something, I was driving along, and all of a sudden it hit me. I said, doggone it's awful quiet. I'm sitting in my car, I mean, just quiet, and it was, it was unreasonable, I mean, the streets were just smooth, smooth as glass. Everywhere I went, every turn I made, those streets were top-shake street. I come back to Burlington, and just, from the bus, bus station, I mean, the train station, any street I go to, just like boom, 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 boom. The city is costing taxpayers money. You know what kind of money it is? Shops, earnings, brakes, flooding alignments. These streets are terrible. They are terrible. And I just wish to get up, I know we're tight for money and stuff like that, but at least when we get somebody to fix our street, get somebody to fix the doggone street. All you do, all you do is asphalt, jump, and no quicker than the snow block comes down off, the holes come back again. They hit them with a bump, they leave it, you know, protected. I don't have to tell you how bad it is, you already know. But we need to do something about our street and our sidewalk. City manager, God bless you, thank you for putting up with me when I come to visit, okay? I talked to your city manager about J Street. Amen, J Street. Have you talked to them about taking a visit down to J Street and take a look at that place? It'll be, it'll be, it'll be really nice.
I've been to J Street.
Go, go down there, and go in, go on down, open up the door, walk in the door, walk around in there, get them to show you around. Open you going to do, you run, and you make a turn this way, bam, you run right into the coke machine, the pop machine. You're gonna go to your left, you run right into the, the death. And then once you're going down into a dungeon, one guy down there, and the guy used to, he said, you wanna go back here, Rick, what's the backwards? And he pointed straight ahead, and it looked like going into a cage. It was so dark, I said, heck no, I don't wanna go back in there. It is, it's, and you already own J Street, the city owns it. I mean, you're paying, you're paying, you're paying the young man down here, you know, do such and things. So you let this young lady in there. Wouldn't it be nice if you take both of the, both of those organizations, combine them together, and get those kids out of that doggone gully hole back there underneath that building? Sure, the people, I've been here forty-four years, Burlington has run teenagers from off the city street, the drag, you know, Main Street, Jefferson Street, they run them off there to the park. They went to the park, they run them out, out of the park. They go down to auditorium, they run them out to auditorium. They haven't got anything for them to do. We need to invest in our young people. You got a young lady that's, that's interested in it, in everything, you get her to run around by coming back and forth, back and forth, ninety days to do this, ninety days to do that. Take them all back, take you five minutes, park your car, get out, go down in there, and just like I say, you walk right down here, and go straight on down, it turns like you're going into a cage. They got computers sitting over here, you go out, you know, walk for your step, and you got a bank of computers there, they're all, they're all right on top of one another like this, you ain't got no airborne room, and that's. Fact about it, they have no place to lounge, 'cause the lounge is right at the end of the computer bench there, the radio screen, somebody sitting up here, laughing and talking, going on, and it's too much entertainment. But at least, you could go, you can go out there to an apple tree, at least you, the city could take control of that. Yeah. I talked to one of the guys, he said he wanted to build another, oh, the park department manager, he's thinking about building another shelter. Well, hey, get, what else, what other shelters have we got? We got a big place out there, not being used one hundred percent. So take, take the money that you invested in J Street there, invest it out there, stand behind your kids. When a kid grows up and leaves this, leaves this city and goes somewhere else, you know, he could, he has something to be proud about. My city cared about me. And stop running these young people all over town. The only thing we can think about doing is, is lighting them up, throwing the kid away. You know, we got some kids out there, and, and a lot of families that help raise their kids like I raised mine. But I thank God for Burlington, I mean, I thank God for the city that, you know, accepted me when I came here, and worked, and found and retired. But there are some things that, you know, you can shop in the tool, if you're feeling some, you know, a hundred eighty something, used to be about a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars, the city would, would appropriate to the Chamber of Commerce and down here to the, but about auditorium. And, worth that money, forty-four years of providing money to them, to create jobs. You don't want me to tell you, I do know, know where, where the money's going. But I think that, you know, beside the point, is that, you know, we can do something, you know, productive for our young people in this town. They need to get to know one another, they need to have that personal experience, they need to have your, and mayor, Davidson, God bless you.
Thank you.
I've been to some events around here, that I think they send letters out to you for certain things, and I went to those events, I didn't even see, but I heard your letter. The letter was good, you know, very well-written letter, but that was a piece of paper. That wasn't the action you. And we need the city to, when they ask to come, and they agree to come, or something, just don't send a letter, show up, show your paper. Beckett, how you doing?
Okay, and I think we were neighbors almost at one, for a while.
Yeah. You're doing a good job so far.
Thank you.
I've got, got to tell you that. Stay on top of eating men, keep them in line. And God bless you, and I thank you, thank you for listening to me tonight, but I, I just say, your streets and sidewalks, you know, and who we're paying taxes for, you know, I feel, one of these days, I hope, when I step out of my house on real to South Garfield, and look at Garfield Street, those holes out there in front of my house out there in the street, won't be there, and they'll, right where I live, if they do the yoke, the little yoke humping, you know, the road coming up Division, coming, and it bottom out, going, well, it's young people. But we got some, I tell you what, right after, you come up in a, a, a Jeep, come up there sometime, just sit. You can hear those trucks when they're coming out, they're coming out the Division. It's just like a, a birter giant night cross across the street, boom, it's like the speed bump. And it's what it is, I know, I know who fits in the street fighting, but he's not doing a good job. And I think we need to stop rubbing certain people's heads, pat them on the head, and give them these jobs when they're not doing a good job. Get somebody that's doing a good job, and get those streets like just moved, like, take the door, go up to Aurora, you take about three hours to go up there. Look at them, bro. In there. And another thing, take some of that money, you spend on Chamber of Commerce, and some of your city councils, and go, get with your, get with your city manager, and go up to Washington DC or someplace like that, where they have a mayor conference and things. See what other people are doing. Spend some money on your, on your mayor, get him out of town, you won't look at him all kind. Send to, send somewhere else so we can see what other people are doing, and, you know, try to not come back in and do something for others. Hey, whatever you got to do to get that Chamber of Commerce off of their behind, tell them they haven't done, they haven't done nothing for forty-four years, you got to prove it. You haven't had a job coming here to compare with those other four, four jobs in forty-four years. All you have is service, service jobs to come in. You expect our young people to stay here. All, I say, it hurt me real bad, all my girls, poor, had to leave Burlington when they graduated out of college to get a job. I sure wish I'd have had one of them back here, stay, we're gonna get old. But, you see what I mean? And it's a lot of people just like me, they get, they can't find a job here. Service jobs, they have to, service jobs, they have to work about two, two or three other things, and think about a mother, trying to raise, raise three, two or three kids, and work three jobs. Just think about that. No insurance, and that's it. We might feel comfortable about it, because I retired, you might feel comfortable about it, because you're doing other things, but that's what we got out there. I think we need to show our citizens more, better respect, you know, and thank this, thank this nation, because you can attack dollars wisely. You're in the same position to rock the whole bottom with them, when you ain't heard all that jumping bush.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the audience?
You ready?
Mark Keela, 21 South 12th Street. Going to Tim's comments about the sidewalks. I think that the people that live on those places, which was Cliff Road when we, when they, federal government paid to have those sidewalks put in, now they did it along Sunnyside, those people should've had to pay to have those sidewalks put in. When my sidewalk got deteriorated, I went through the city and got your, what is it, a dollar a foot? You remember what it was? It was like a dollar a running foot to help replace my sidewalk. Well, these people should be having to replace their sidewalks, and same way with West Avenue, or, yeah, West Avenue, I think, they got a few spots out there that need it too, but Mason Road. The developers out there, the Presbyterian Church owns a section, Sunrise owns a section, Catholic Church owns a section, they should all pay to have that put in, or let's find a different route, because, as Tim brought up, when the snow gets plowed, what about when it floods and you can't get cars through there? The school buses can't get through it, sure as heck aren't gonna have kids walking through it. So we need to do something as far as finding a safe route to the schools, and it shouldn't be just the city paying for it, it should be, or the federal government, should be making the homeowners pay, or, yeah, the homeowners, landowners pay for it. As far as his comments about the city streets, many years ago, back in the late seventies, I worked for the utility company, and I went up to Minneapolis, and they took their road use tax, and they did a very innovative thing that we should've been doing it all along. They went out and replaced a block of street at least each year. They now have, in, in a very short time, they have all paved streets. They broke down on their maintenance as far as, they cut down their maintenance as far as having to repair the streets, they made it so they could plow their streets a lot faster, they put in the street, and then they put in just gravel for curb and gutter. They didn't put in curb and gutter, they just put gravel. My mother-in-law happens to live on a street that's one block on South 10th, it's seal coated, it's pavement on both ends, but that one block isn't. And at the south end of it, it gets quite, that hole in front of the Free Methodist Church, I think it's on South 10th, and Pine.
Yeah, I know.
We could, what we spend for repairing that street- We could, what we spend for repairing that street every year, in a couple of years, we could pave that and just put gravel in there, parking in the parking anyway, our gravel. But we have a lot of streets that we can do that with. Instead of going out and spreading some tar and then throwing gravel over it, and then we take the streets we brought the next week and sweep all the gravel back up. That's the biggest joke there is. We need to pay attention to our streets. We use the road use tax, doing something like that, we can have good streets in this town.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Seeing down council, you have any comments?
No.
No.
Mr. City Manager, you have any closing thoughts?
Just to let you know, the hydroelectric dam, the permit was filed timely at the end of the month and they did receive that. Have not heard it back yet where we stand on that. And technically, another community could have filed at the same time and put us into a lottery system on that. I assume that will not happen, but we still have to just wait for word that, whether that has been, whether we're approved as the, one to have that permit for the next three years or not. Thank you. I don't know if all of you got an email. I know the mayor did in regards to, uh, League is holding a, a regional meeting, meeting on fiscal conditions facing cities. The one that's in our area is on Tuesday, October 16th, from 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock up in Corahville at the library. The mayor, I think, was mentioning that he may be able to make that along with some other appointments he already has up in the area. I plan on being up at that. But it's one to, just would encourage you to look at going to, what the League is trying to accomplish there, there is, uh, they're trying to get a tool out that you can take a look at that, uh, that looks at fiscal conditions, things that have occurred over the last several years to give you some talking points in terms of how to deal with, what is, what does the property tax dollars mean to a city in terms of meeting the needs of our community for streets, sidewalks, police, fire, and all the other necessary things to make us work. Uh, there was a lot of comments that have come out in the last couple of legislative sessions in regards to property tax about the increase that has occurred in the property tax amount. Uh, what they're trying to do is give some talking points in terms of looking at what, how much has ours increased over the last 10 years? And what can you tie that to within your community? And talk about the potential impact of any potential property tax changes that might come out of this next legislative session. So it's one that they, that just is encouraged to, to go to if you have the opportunity.
That's October 16th.
Correct.
What day of the week is that?
Tuesday. And that's all I have.
And we are scheduled to be at the Iowa League of Cities Meeting next week. So yeah, I am getting out of town, Mr. Sparks, on that particular week. I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second to adjourn. Kathleen?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay, thank you for coming, folks. God bless you and God bless Burlington.
You see October 16th?
Yeah.